Here?
Here.
Ms. Danworth?
Here.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Ms. Stickland?
Here.
Mr. Landis?
Present.
And Ms. Sharp?
Present.
Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kimbrough, second by Mr. Landis. Any discussion?
We need to take one, the salary schedule, item 19, off of the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we remove that from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Nichols, help me. We have two motions on the, which way do I need to go?
There were two motions?
Well, a motion to approve the agenda, but we needed to make a change of agenda.
Oh, just, well, there may be a lot of difference.
Mr. Kimbrough, and second by Mr. Landis.
Do you accept the amendment?
Yes, I accept the amendment, yes.
So, I meant, approved the first motion and the amendment.
Okay. I'm going to amend the first motion to take off the salary schedule, number 19, and put it on the regular agenda for item number three, under the regular agenda, please. Is that all?
Yes.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Under reports, we are going to recognize some Teacher of the Year.
If you wouldn't mind, Ms. Smith, if you wouldn't come up and talk a little bit about the process for both Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Person of the Year, and make some introductions.
I can do that. Well, the process for these two awards, I'll start with the Joplin Teacher of the Year. Every year we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Every year, the buildings nominate a gold, or one or two golden eagles in their building, depending on how large their building is. From that nomination, and really any other award that a teacher has been bestowed with, so it could be a golden apple, or something of that nature, makes them eligible for a nomination for the Joplin Teacher of the Year. So they go through a process where they submit application materials, and those materials are reviewed, and are reviewed by a committee, and finalists are chosen, those finalists are interviewed, and from that, the Joplin Teacher of the Year is chosen. And then, the Joplin Teacher of the Year goes on to represent Joplin Schools in the Missouri Teacher of the Year process. So, that's how that unfolds. The Support Staff Person of the Year is actually a new award this year. We are doing it a little bit different, whereas it, we wanted to, well, let me back up. One of the things that we did this year is, we used to have a criteria that a person needed to be in the district for three years. But we like the idea of recognizing any teacher that was, you know, doing a great job, and, you know, going about things all the right way. So, that could include a brand-new teacher, you know, if they were really coming in and doing a great thing, and they were nominated by their peers, so we included that. So with the Support Staff Person, we initiated that on the front side. So, they were nominated by, again, by somebody in their building, or anybody in the district, and we even opened it up on the website to take some nominations, but a person was, they had an application form, was nominated, they could send supporting documents, like letters of recommendation, and again, those entries were viewed by a committee, and then a Support Staff Person was chosen from there. So, with that, this year, we have our first Support Staff Person of the Year, along with our Joplin Teacher of the Year.
Awesome. So, introductions?
Let's start with Ms. Chris Boyer.
Okay.
Yeah, Bo, Mr. Lee, would you mind coming up? We have a special presentation this evening. Mr. Lee is the president of the Foundation Board, and former president of the Joplin Schools Board of Education. I appreciate you being here tonight, representing the foundation. And, Chris, would you mind coming up? I bet you like being on television. Chris is one of many fantastic teachers at the Joplin Schools, and she's in the Science Department at Joplin High School. And how many years you been with us, Chris?
Finished 12.
Finished 12 years. And, Chris has done great work, as you all know. Chris is one of the great ones among our teaching staff, and somebody we're very proud of, and proud to call her one of our own. So, at this time, we have a special recognition for you on behalf of the Joplin Schools Foundation. So I'll turn it over to you.
Chris, on behalf of the family of Fred Lass, and the Fred Lass Endowment, and the Joplin Schools Foundation, I'm very honored to present you with this check in recognition of your award.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have one more award that we'd like to give this evening, and that's for Mr. Mike McAllister. If we could have him come up, please. Mike, do you have some people with you this evening?
I do, I actually have my wife and my three boys. That's Cassie, Jason, Michael, and Cory. Do you want them to come up as well?
Sure. Right there. Be on camera, come on.
It looks like the boys have fixed their hair, so they should. Camera, where is your camera?
As Ms. Smith indicated, this is the first time that we've been able to have taken the opportunity to recognize Staff Support Person of the Year, and something that I've always said since I walked in the district, was we're all educators, we all play a role in this, our Support Staff. It doesn't happen without Support Staff, and in particular, as you guys know, if technology doesn't work, nothing works, and Mike McAllister's with the Tech Department, technology specialist from the Tech Department, and works at, is it Columbia? What's going you at?
I'm actually at Singleton. Admin, Cesar Floyd, and Irving.
That's a lot of peers. So, Mike's done a fantastic job, has a great personality, and has well-respect amongst his peers, and obviously, somebody out there in the district thinks a lot of you as well, and was nominated, and he was selected as the Support Staff Person of the Year. So, once again, I'm going to introduce both of you, with the Foundation, to honor you and your work.
Mike, I want you to know that I left the school board when they put the computer in front of me. I had to use that paper. I'm proud to give you this check from the Joplin Schools Foundation as the first recipient of the Support Staff of the Year Award. It's great. They came to us last week and said, "We have this opportunity, would you guys like to participate?" And we also felt like the Support Staff are very, very important to our kids, and so, I'm very pleased to give you this check.
You know where it's going. Someone's handing it over.
Good job, Bo.
Congratulations to you both, thank you for coming this evening. Joplin Elementary and Middle School Regional Award, Hollis Miller.
Yeah, we have John Brown and company here tonight, if you wouldn't mind bringing yourself and your team up here.
Just me tonight?
Just you tonight? And.
Sorry about that, Danny. John Brown with Hollis Miller is here this evening to present a special award to the school district for, as you'll recall, Hollis Miller was architects on Soaring Heights and East Middle School, and very proud of that project, so I'm going to let them share a little bit about this particular award.
Thank you, CJ. On behalf of Hollis Miller Architects, we really looked at, we look at a lot of different awards, and we don't, as an architecture firm, we just don't look at awards that are from AIA, based on awards from our peers. We look at awards for us that are based on education. Because we are education specialists, we feel it's really important that it's the education component that is recognized as good architecture, not just the spaces themselves. And so, CFPI, which is the Council of Educational Facility Planners International, is an international organization that is made up of facility planners and educators, that make up that group of folks that are part of that organization, and they have regional awards and national awards, and the regional award for this region here, makes up, I think, 11 states, and goes into Canada, has some other areas, and the John Shaw Award was the award for excellence, and it's, what it's called, it's the Excellence in Design and Functional Planning and Innovative Solutions to Programming Challenges. And so, they really take a look at how the building is designed based on education, and how we looked at and worked with educators and community members on how we brought that building together that best serves the educational aspects of a project. And then, of course, as I think Dr. Besten, or a few other people have said, the byproduct, we also have great-looking spaces in that building, and there are some awesome spaces, but they were functionally designed for the students of Joplin to be able to achieve their learning objectives they want to learn. And so, the, on behalf of Hollis Miller, to the Joplin School District, this is the 2014 John Shaw Award for Joplin, Soaring Heights, and East Middle School. So I just wanted to present that to you tonight, as well as I have one for Teresa and for Bud, for each of their schools.
Chris Adams.
Come on up here, bud.
Pretty cool.
Congratulations, we appreciate all the hard work that you guys worked with our team.
Put that one up from here. Appreciate your work, great firm of work, right?
and our design teams in developing our buildings. We had, on the design team, we had community members, staff members, and students, and leadership team, and I just appreciate the efforts that each of our architects have taken to listen on how we like to teach in our buildings. Thank you very much, it's an honor, well-deserved for that firm. Superintendent reports?
Okay, we've got a number of items this evening. The first up is portable dental program, and we have Mr. Marless here this evening to talk a little bit about what that's about. So, real excited to share some great results from our first year with the portable dental program.
Good evening, everybody. I want to introduce to you Katie Dobbs, and she is basically the coordinator for the portable dental clinic that Access has been providing for the past year, and I wanted to offer all the good news for her to share. She has some good stuff she wants to talk about, and also, tonight, we do have before us the renewal of the agreement with Access, and I think this is a good timely share-out for the benefits that we've received from their services.
So, just really quick, Mark could let me know that you guys already do have the report in your paperwork, so I do have extras if you guys would like them, if anyone else needs them. It pretty much just speaks for itself. You can definitely see the numbers, just on paper, of the amount of students that we've served this last year. A little bit of background about our portable dental services, if you guys aren't really familiar with it. It's basically mobile equipment that we do set up in the schools. We don't have one of the, you know, drivable RV vans, which most people think that that's what portable is. We actually, we bring it into the schools, we set up in like a vacant classroom, we've set up in teachers' lounges, we've set up in hallways. I know Columbia, with it being an older, smaller school, we just kind of set up in a hallway, and we were able to serve the students in that small amount of room. So basically with that, and I'm just going to kind of read what our mission is with portable dental. Just the in-school dental program, it helps students reduce the amount of class time that's missed due to absences and doctor visits because of tooth pain. The schools where programs such as this have been implemented, have seen a decrease in absences and an increase in improved learning in the classroom. It's difficult for children to learn while in pain. Schools implementing this program have also seen the rate of new decay on those participating that has dropped to almost zero. And that's one of the things that we, that we just really pride ourselves on, and I'm, you know, very fortunate that I get to actually lead the program. I'm very passionate about it, I've been with Access for over six years, and then, as myself, as a dental hygienist, I really get involved in, you know, the progress of the work that's being done on the children. I really try to stay on follow-up calls, sending letters to the parents, so that we can make sure that once we've touched these children's lives, and they've become an established patient with Access Family Care, that they are, they are a patient with us, not only dentally, but we have that medical home, too, for them to get that access for. Really quick, also with portable dental, I just have a couple little testimonials that I want to tell you guys about, that we actually, you know, a lot of these children just, I mean, they poured their hearts out to us, as far as, you know, a lot of them, as far as their family situations, and what we were providing for them. Some of these children were eight, nine, 10 years old, and had never been to a dentist before, until we brought our services to them. So, very quickly, one of the children that we have, and this is what we pride ourselves on, are that we not only see, you know, patients with insurance, but we also do see uninsured, we also see a lot of patients with private insurance as well, so I don't want anybody to think that we are just a Medicaid clinic, because we aren't. We provide our services to everyone, we give access to care. Back to, back to the story, one little guy that we saw, he's one of our typical uninsured, you know, lower-income families, they work for a living, and so, they didn't really have very reliable transportation to get him to the dentist. He's also one of the kiddos that had so much work that needed to be done, that he would have missed multiple class periods getting him to the office. Their family owns their own business, mom gets up early in the morning, goes to work at Freeman, in the afternoon, they start their restaurant business for lunch and dinner time. So, this little guy relies on you guys for his transportation to get him to and from school, let alone to get him to office visits. He had nine teeth that were decayed and needed to be restored, we were able to do that in four visits. So, yes, it takes four different days for us to do that. Normally, we're set up in the classroom, or somewhere in the school, for about a week to two weeks, depending on the size of the school. So that allowed us to get him done in four hours. And this, like I said, decreased the amount of time that his parents needed to take off work, and then also for him to miss, you know, multiple class time for hours. A second one was a little girl, she was 10, she had special needs, she did have high-functioning autism, which allowed her to know what was going on, so she wasn't really quite apt to open her mouth for us, which made it a little difficult. But, I'm sure you guys know that when you are dealing with some high-functioning autism, they have to gain your trust. And so, I was able to see her three days in a row, for very quick visits, just to, you know, introduce myself, let her know who I was, kind of look in her mouth very quickly, and by the fourth day, we completed everything on her. And, you know, with parents, with, you know, special needs children, they're not able to take off as much either, for them, for their child to gain your trust in the office. It allows us to do that as well. Just two quick other stories, we saw another little girl, very fearful of the dentist. It, again, took us three visits to get everything done, but the first day, we took x-rays, the second day, we did the cleaning, and the third day, we got her sealants completed. That made her decay-free, we were able to do that for her as well. And then, another thing that we like to do is we collaborate with all of our clinics. We did have a little guy that I had been in the clinic over Christmas break, and I actually did his cleaning. He needed to come back for an appointment, an appointment for sealants, and mom was really, you know, struggling at the front desk, trying to come up with a day and time that would work for her to get her son back. I then chimed in and said, "Hey, guess what? We're going to be in your school in about two weeks, if you'd like for me to, I'd be more than happy to see him in school for those services." And it worked out perfect, she didn't have to take off work again, we could get that 30-minute appointment taken care of, and we were happy to do that. Another thing that I would just like to address is, Mark and I were kind of talking about some efforts for next year. I will actually be in charge of portable dental, I've been the portable dental lead. We did have an outreach coordinator, and that outreach coordinator has just left Access Family Care before summer started, so I haven't taken on her responsibilities, which is actually kind of a good thing, it doesn't incorporate a middleman. The schools are able to call me directly, I'm able to set up and schedule everything just onsite, it doesn't have to go through a different schedule before it gets to me, which makes it a little bit easier. So, yes, I'm able to coordinate on the spot. And then, we're also looking at other opportunities to start a collaboration with all the schools, we're looking at maybe the early head start, and regular head start, at starting some collaborations with them, and they'll actually be able to enhance some of our services. I wish I could give more details, I'm not able to do so at this time, but I definitely think this next year is going to look bright, and I even think, if we can add, so we saw 355 kids this last year, if we could just double that number, we're going to see a tremendous amount of dental needs taken care of in the Joplin Schools. And I know we have our clinic in Joplin, and a lot of people, you know, say, "Oh, you've got your Joplin clinic, why are you doing portable in schools?" It's the sole reason that we're reaching out to these children, that are just underserved, and are not able to get themselves to the clinic. They can't drive, so we do that for them.
I want to highlight, too, real quickly, and I know the first paragraph in the, in the report that was shared, you know, I think highlights and indicates the intensity of the services. We had, this is our second year for a portable dental clinic, last year's was dismal compared to what we received through the Access and the services they provided. Even with snow days and a late start, you know, they, they more than doubled the services that we had, and I think the biggest indicator of their service is the $64,901 that's charity services that was distributed to the uninsured or underinsured children in Joplin Schools, speaks for itself, and the continued need for such a vital service for our children. And I want to commend Access, and also, I want to commend Holly Tony, our Director of Nursing, and Coordinator for Nursing in Joplin Schools, who, without her reaching out and looking for alternatives to the dental program, we wouldn't have what we have today, so.
And Holly was amazing to work with, she really is, so.
She's not typical.
Do you have a, are you going to go down to the preschool level?
We did, we went to the Early Childhood Center over at McKinley Elementary, and I'll tell you what, some of those three-year-olds were better than the nine and 10-year-olds that we saw, so.
That's because they didn't know any better.
Well, hey, next time, we'll put you in the chair.
Does anyone have any questions?
This is a great program.
Thank you for all the care you shared.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready for a construction update, and I think we've got Jason here this evening that has a slideshow, is going to tell us a little bit about how things are progressing. It's probably the, well, without question, the number-one question I get asked every single day in every conversation I have with just about anybody, including my children at home, is, "Are we coming?" So, are we having some technical problems?
No.
Oh, we're good? All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Jason, appreciate Jason's hard work, and the work of his team, they've done some great work, and a lot of progress being made every day over there.
So, today, the presentation format's a little bit different, gives you a more up-to-date view of where we're at, and really, each of the slides have a, let's see if the clicker's working here. No. Was that me, or was that you? Was that me? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, it gives you, today, it's going to show kind of the floor plan, so you'll know what area we're in, and as we jump to the pictures, it'll give you a first, I guess, up-to-date look at what the location looks like today. This is the performing arts, the auditorium, you can see Area A as you jump in, it's just a picture looking out, and so that I don't have to describe these and read them to you, I'll just try to go quickly here, so that it's not making you too dizzy, if you want me to go back, or slower, just let me know, but this is just a look at it from the upper level, the same Area A. And that jumps next to, I can't see here, we're in Area B there, so your lower, your Jet 14 location, the broadcast area, just lacking flooring and the final finishes.
Is that probably your roof on there?
Yeah, that's a sound, yeah, that sound isolation.
Twenty-five.
Okay, so it jumps us down, and I'm just, there's a number of slides here, so I'll try to make it quickly, tell me if I need to slow down, your lower-level food nutrition Bouncing over, just showing kind of the status of the restrooms. Culinary arts, we've got the hoods and the equipment going in, setting up at this time.
Yep.
We'll be going from that here in the next couple of weeks, moving up to the kitchen area. This is the lower-level Area G, so your robotics and Franklin Tech labs. Jumping further into Franklin Tech, kind of shows you what the current bays look like for the construction lab areas. Both J and H are in the same condition right now, ready for paint, and finishing up the final rough end. Your central utility plant's piped up, and the systems are running right now.
And I mentioned cold air tomorrow, still?
We are, we are energizing, so we are, we are charging the system tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
Moving down, then your greenhouse, the status of it today, or, sorry, last week. Then jumping over to the large gym. These are the, this is the least finish of all your areas in the large gym, so it's the last restroom we left open for our access, so that's why that one shows, everything else is further advanced. Your brick eagle.
Ah, that's awesome.
Looking down at the main gym area.
They finished painting the ceiling this last week, I think.
Yep. And the locker rooms. I think, I think it might have skipped a slide there. Nope. So, boy, it's hard for me to see from that far out. Area C, your studios, basically just showing kind of the finished status of each of the classroom wings.
You've already punched out some wings, right?
We have, we've punched out Area C and D, we are punching right now Area E, and then B is the furthest along, so it'll be the last one, and we're punching that the end of this week.
Jason, what's that?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, that platform that sticks out?
Right there, that's it.
What is that platform that's jutting out from the?
Just a walkway, the walkpath, up top there?
It's the egg drop flat, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Isn't it the egg drop flat?
This, right here?
Yes.
So, will the V railings?
There'll be railing, yes, the railings in fabrication right now.
And then, will that be painted, or will that be what it looks like?
It doesn't, it doesn't call for paint, it's got the kind of grouted finish, and we've got planning beds and everything that go in each one of those steps.
Okay.
So we're actually getting ready to start, there's some irrigation infiltration that goes in each of those islands.
Oh, wow.
Additional labs. So it really shows, from the outside, we've still got a lot of panels and things to put on, but on the inside, we're punching and finishing, finishing spaces. This is standing on the third floor, looking down at your cafeteria. The Rose Garden location there you're looking at. This is Area L, the ROTC, this is the furthest behind, I say behind, the last area of our sequence to finish, so it's, it's just lacking gyp on the walls to finish up, which, which will be going in here in the next couple of weeks. That, I'll back up to this, this area, this shows kind of the latest sequence of all the classroom wings, which we'll be finishing up, they're putting the floors in and dropping the ceilings this week.
Is Area B, which, which of the major classroom wings is the last to come online?
That one.
B is?
That is the last one, yep.
Which represents what?
All classrooms.
Okay.
Yep, yep, so that's the last in the sequence of all the classrooms. This just gives you an up-to-date look, and they're setting both D and E. This just gives you an up-to-date look, and they're setting both D and E, or not D, sorry, that's your link, that connects all of the classroom wings. So this is the third floor, they're finished out, getting ready to drop ceiling tiles and do carpet on that. And they'll go from third, second, and then first, to finish those out over the next couple of weeks.
So we should see carpet even in those links over the next?
We're gonna hold it off to the very last minute, just from sequencing, and I know the district's gonna be moving furniture in after the Fourth of July, so depending on that sequence, if you want us to hold it out or if you want us to install it, so we'll work with Mike on that.
Keep it clean, so that's understandable.
Those kind of wood areas, there's a graphic that goes there in those locations that are in the glass. And then kind of looking at the overall site, and there's photos of each one, kind of takes you in a little bit closer at where we're at today, looking at the baseball field. Your soccer field's current status, and you can kind of see both the football and soccer there.
When they started on the lighting for the sports fields?
It's supposed to have arrived this week, so we'll be getting that, we'll be getting that moving. And that's kind of looking back at the north face, you can start to see the composite panels, the black locations are where your Swiss Pearl goes, so that'll infill with red where you see the black, which will finish out the exterior.
Is that on-site now?
Uh, the system is in Kansas City right now, so the sub-framing is there and they're starting on that as we speak, so they're working on that now. And that's looking at the Performing Arts from the north. And you can see today, I mean, that was just last week, it's already sheathed now, so it's coming along quickly. And that was the end of the slide.
What's the completion date on the Performing Arts?
It's still, right now, it's December, the end of December, but we are really pushing hard to see if we can improve that every day. So we're making big steps, but it's still too early to commit to an earlier, an earlier date.
So they're doing a lot of curbing and a lot of, when they're doing that curbing on grand in Indiana, are they just going to asphalt up to the street?
Yes, yep, yep, they'll fill in between the curb and the street with asphalt. And we're getting ready, the west side, we're getting, by July 7th, we'll have that first parking in, the approaches to the dock, so that from the district standpoint, when they're bringing in furniture for those wings, we'll be able to access the dock and use the elevator, so should sequence out well.
What about the landscape, what about the landscaping?
Uh, they've finished the irrigation on the northeast quadrant, the practice fields, so the irrigation's roughed in there, we've got sleeves through all of the hardscape locations now. They're, this week, working on the infiltration, the bio-infiltration locations, and finishing up kind of head placement on everything that we're getting ready to curb in, so that they're not isolated, but they're outside, onsite every day.
Well, they've cut something through from the grassy area, right there, close to 20th Street, and it's almost a full-size property. When I was out there yesterday, I noticed it.
Off, along 20th?
It's on the, it's in the grassy part of the area, it's almost an, lack of irrigation to it.
That's where they're, that's where they were working.
Okay.
On the practice area, we've got a, we've got a trolley stop-off 20th.
On the north end.
Yeah, that's irrigation, that was irrigation. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Cravens, would you like to come forward and introduce this next agenda item, which is a student achievement highlight?
Well, we, we love to celebrate student achievement and the successes that we have as a district, so I'm really just here to introduce the man who's going to give you the good news. I'm gonna introduce Carrie Skedda, talk about the graduation rate, so Dr. Skedda?
Jason told me you had a couple of minutes, so that's all we'll take. No, I'm excited to tell you about our graduation rate of the last few years. Unofficially, the class of 2014 had an 83.4% graduation rate, that's an on-time graduation rate, a four-year on-time. What's significant about that for us is the fact that the on-time graduation rate is better than just a one-year snapshot of all kids in the building regardless of what cohort they were in. So that's better. In fact, over the last four years, we've raised our on-time graduation rate by 9.8%. So we're excited about that, very excited. The state is also coming up with a five-year graduation rate that will be part of the IMSIP calculation as well. So the class of 2013 that graduated a year ago, their on-time graduation rate was 85.7% unofficially, right now, that's unofficial. We think it's gonna be very close to that number, that's a very good number for five years on-time. We had several kids from the class of 2013 that came back and they decided to stay with us and to graduate, did a great job, so we're excited about that. That's a 9% increase since 2011, on the five-year rate, if that holds, that's unofficial, but if that holds, I think you'll be pretty close to that. So, wanted to tell you a little bit about that and just kind of celebrate that, all the work we've done over the years. And then finally, the one-year on, one-year snapshot of everybody in the building regardless of what cohort they were in, and as we just compare that to graduates and dropouts in the course of one year, that's another graduation, graduation rate calculation that we've used in the past, the state of Missouri's used. Looks like 2014 unofficially, we're at 85.5 with that calculation, so that's very good. You know, looking back in the years, since 2010, we've been over 80% three times, close, we were at 79% in 2011 and 78.5 in 2012, so that's very good improvement. Our average is going up over the course of years, as you can tell, the number of students graduating on average is up too over previous years, as well as the percentage of students graduating. So we're excited about that, and a lot of hard work by our teachers, you know, there's some teachers here behind me that, they're instrumental in that as well as their peers. Very excited about what they've done over the years to make different decisions in their PLC meetings on Tuesday mornings. Next year, it's been on Wednesday in the past, but they do, they make a lot of decisions in those meetings for assessment purposes, giving kids more opportunities and holding them accountable, but just being more human, you know, than maybe we have been in the past in terms of the time spent that kids, sometimes kids can do it if you just give them a little more time and you're there for tutoring, give a little, a few more extra chances and those kind of things, but still hold them accountable for the standard. So we're excited about the work they've done, our principals and counselors, Sandra Cantwell is behind me. If you didn't know, Sandra Cantwell was recently named Southwest Missouri Assistant Principal of the Year in our region. We announced that, that's on the webpage and everything, we're excited about her work, but all the assistant principals, and Dan Hiller had the senior class, did an outstanding job as well with those kids. He stayed with those kids for two years. We're kind of looping right now with the junior and senior principal, and that's helping, we think. So that gets the principals to know the kids a little bit better at that age level, so we think that's been a big help. But if you go on to the meetings that the teachers are involved in, our special ed programs, Missouri Options, Flex, Turency Court, Tutoring, Eagle Time, Hope Counselors, and in the program that Volia Cook and John Godfrey was in, it takes all those things working together, and I think we've got to a point over the last decade or so that we kind of hit our stride and feeling like that we're able to catch kids at different points. And all those programs are necessary in Joplin to make sure that we do the best we can for our graduates, so we're excited about that, and I thank you for your support in letting us have these programs.
That's awesome. I think it's also important to note that this is a district-wide success, you know, recognition of success because it starts at the very earliest stage of their education, so everybody plays a part in that, and everybody should be thanked and appreciated for their hard work on that.
Proud of that, good job.
Any questions for Dr. Skedda?
Okay, thank you.
He tried to get out of that.
Um, we have, next agenda item is Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Recognitions. We have some buildings that have done some great things with PBIS, and I think Ms. Dozier's here to introduce this group and share some of the successes there.
Yes, as you know, we use positive behavior support in our elementaries here in the school district, and each one is working very diligently in that area to improve positive behaviors throughout the building and decrease our negative behaviors that may exist. And so we have some schools that were recognized for hitting levels of achievement through our state and through DESI, and so would like to recognize those schools this evening. Cecil Floyd Elementary, our principal is Gail Hennessy there, and they received the Bronze Award for PBIS, so we're excited about that, two years in a row, so that's exciting. And who is your teacher you have with you?
Suzie Elliott, she's our library media specialist.
Excellent. We know, one of the things that I think that makes PBIS so successful in the buildings is that it, the teachers are working regularly, they have teams of teachers that work on Tier One, Tier Two levels, and eventually Tier Three, depending on where you are in the process. And so it's exciting to know that it's the real work that our teachers are doing every day to get this done. And the Bronze Level, it takes, what the state says is it takes about two to four years for a school to achieve at that level, so we're excited for that, for them to have two years of that. Then we have Irving Elementary, Nyla Vance is our principal at Irving Elementary, and they received the Bronze as well, award as well. And you want to introduce your teacher?
This is one of my first grade teachers, Whitney Benfield.
So, very exciting. And then we had McKinley Elementary received the Silver.
Second year.
Second year for their Silver, so.
Those were big shoes to step into, I think Ms. Dozier left, and so I was, that was one thing I was not gonna let slip down, come back to Bronze. And with having several new staff, we put all the teachers on either Tier One or Tier Two, so that everybody was involved. Ashley Wright, who's a fifth grade teacher, was our Tier One coach, so she's here to represent that level.
And then Beacon School, Susan James is our director, principal there, and they received the Gold, which is the highest.
Jennifer? Can you explain, for those that don't know what Tier One and Tier Two and the tiers levels is?
Oh, sure.
For those that's listening and watching, I'll just work.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, yes. Tier One is every student, it's what you're doing for all students, it's the things that you put in place to, for every day. So those are your SOAR expectations. So all elementaries, you SOAR, show respect, observe safety, accept responsibility, and resolve problems or conflicts, some use problems, some use conflict, but same thing. And so those are the daily expectations, they have their matrix, which talks about how, what those, what each one of those look like in each area in the school. And they have incentives in place for the kids through various means, whether that be in the classroom, whole school, different things that they've put into place, and that can vary among school based upon the teachers in that school and what their team develops for their school, for the needs of their building, based upon the data that they get back on discipline to help meet the needs of the students. And so Tier One is just about every day, what does it look like every day in school and the things that are in place that's preventative, I guess would be a way to put that up. Tier Two, those are your students who you start working on, with students who may have, usually we're looking at two to five referrals, and so on two to five referrals, we look at how many referrals, what did they get referrals in, they may do a check-in, checkout system where they have a teacher that's a mentor for them, that they go and they check in with in the morning, check in at noon, check in in the evening. And so Tier Two Team works on, how can we work with these students to help improve, they may have social skills lessons, different things like that that are put in place to help get them moving forward and making better choices in the future. And then a Tier Three level is your students who have six or more referrals that need heavy intervention and work with learning how to be successful daily in school-wide. So those are the tiers that we work with, so. Who is your teacher that you have with you?
This is Mr. CJ August, he does math and PE and whatever else we're asking.
So they were all recognized, there was just recently a summer institute that was held by the State of Missouri, and each of these schools were recognized in that summer institute. I think one of you has one of the plaques that you received, so we could show them what that looks like, at least give them a quick idea of what that may look like. They each receive a plaque that they can hang in their school and, which looks very nice, and so we're real proud of them, so congratulations.
Alright, thank you very much, appreciate it. We have just a real quick update, as I indicated, the board, I think I've even mentioned on the radio in a time or two already, we had our first visit from the State Audit Office this, today, 2:00. We had two members of the lead team come down, spend some time with the school district. Annie and Mike were there, I represented the school board, I had a good visit with them about what the process looks like going forward. They will be coming to the July Board Meeting to do a similar presentation on the board, just to kind of give you guys an overview of the process. And if they haven't started already at that point, which would, you know, would just be within a few days prior or the day of that they'd actually get started, they'll be starting that process shortly thereafter. So it looks like end of July, the audit process will start. As far as how long that takes is virtual unknown, they said that they would do some work on the front end and get a sense and let us know. But they'll be here in essence, four days a week, 10 hours a day, and spending time with Paul and his staff, working through the audit process and bringing a final report to the board at a later date, once we've completed the process. So this is all new territory for us, I don't know if Mike and Annie have anything they'd like to add.
That's the same time as we do our annual audit.
Yeah.
So at the same time, so they shouldn't interfere with each other, hopefully.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that, Paul, I don't know if you want to visit about that, because there was some conversation about, okay, we've got our annual audit that we have, that usually starts about the end of July, now we have our state auditor coming in as well, so we'll be doing dual-purpose there for a little bit.
Right, Dr. Huff, the State Auditor's Office mentioned that they'll review the financial audit and past audits and try to avoid any redundant work or duplication as they define their scope of work they do there. The state's audit is more operational in nature, our annual audit's more straight, just financial, but they will consider that work so they don't duplicate.
So that's all we really know right now, but we'll certainly keep the board and community informed as we go through that process.
Yeah, they also said the auditor will not comment during the audit, they'll become radio silence, so they will not be making any statements during the audit.
But during that time, we will be communicating with them directly, so we'll have a good sense of how the audit's progressing over the duration of the audit, so we'll be reporting those findings as those things occur, to the board as they occur.
The good news is, the school district does not have to pay for that audit.
Yes.
They confirmed that again today when we met with them, that it was on the state's dime and not the school district's.
And it will, you might tell them when it'll be actually go public.
That's yet to be seen, it depends on how long they're here. They could be here as little as four months, four to six months, could be here over a year, depending on how deeply they get into some things. You know, our situation's very complicated and they acknowledge that, with all the construction we have going on, the donations that have been received, we're not your typical, we're not the typical district they audit. And so they thought they'd get a better sense of what, when they get here, as to how long they'd be onsite, but once they've made their initial findings, they'll give the district an opportunity to respond to those findings, and a final report will be presented to the school board, open session format, just like this, and then the final audit report will likely be available to the, to the public at a later date. What's that?
I thought they said they did a closed session.
Um, they're, possibly.
It's not public, because underneath.
Oh, that's right, yeah, they'd start out in closed session and then it'd be the final report that would become.
Final report will be public.
Be public, yes. Actually, that's, it looks like that's, oh, we have one more, JHSFTSC Course Revisions. And I believe we have Jason and Carrie here again to talk a little bit about that.
We're back, I'm gonna stay with him this time. And you would think, doing such a great job on the graduation rate, that Carrie and the team of administrators and teachers wouldn't have much time to do anything else, but the reality is, they've been working constantly on courses and evaluating programs, and so what we wanted to do is bring forth some revisions and changes of courses and programs and just give the board an update on that.
Okay. One course that we had been talking about the last two or three years was Advanced Placement European History. We want to bring that course in next school year. It'll be open also to sophomores that qualify for the course, so that, we've had AP World History for several years, but we'd like to replace that course with AP European History for next year. We have a teacher that's ready to go to training in that regard as well. A couple of things, we wanted to make changes with cadet teaching, is we wanted to probably do a better job with getting kids out into the elementary schools, but also daycares potentially, as other places in town where they could, especially kids that are interested in, in human services at the senior level, to get kids in those kind of places to make sure that they get opportunities to work with younger children in the cadet teaching program that we have, so we want to do a better job with that. We also, at the secondary level, make sure that we can get kids in grades six through 12. Obviously, we have lots of needs in our high school for cadet teaching, but we want to change that up and make sure that that was available. We put a little bit more oomph in our office assistant requirements there for students to qualify as office assistants and make sure that they have a little bit more criteria and things that they have to take care of when they're working in the office. Also, teacher assistance. Also, teacher assistance's been around a long time, it's always been for no credit. We have several teachers that really do an outstanding job with the work that they, they put their teacher assistant through. There's some teacher assistants that really put a lot of time in, and we want to strengthen that program, and also have more oversight over that. But we're also going to give the kids an opportunity, if they elect to, to get credit for it. If they, if they don't want to get credit, they don't have to, but if they want to, we're going to allow them to, to do that, that's an intention. Because of the split campuses, we had Introduction to Sociology and Introduction to Psychology the last couple of years at the nine, ten campus, and we want to split the class into two parts, and offer that two semester classes there. AP exam fees, we had not charged in previous years for AP exams. We feel like, and the teachers kind of brought this to our attention too, for accountability purposes and everything going on with AP exam, and make sure that kids are serious about taking the exam. We have some kids that get into AP classes that maybe aren't as prepared as they should be, or maybe once they got into the class, you know, survival is more important, and, and those kind of things. And we want to make sure that all kids are ready, and that they're, they have some accountability towards the exam. There's several kids, obviously, most kids spend a lot of time in the AP courses, and working and tutoring, and we just want to make sure that we have accountability with that, within the system. So we're, all the schools around us pretty much charge at least some kind of fee, the, the entire fee, which is around eighty-nine dollars, or some fee, so we want to put that in the future. And then one thing that we came up with, that we're excited about, is offering dual credit, putting another layer of dual credit in, and offering four point seven five weight for an A in those courses. We've had, we have a cum laude system, as you're aware of, and Advanced Placement, we feel like is very rigorous, and we leave those courses at a five weight for an A. But we also feel like that the dual credit courses, mostly that we get from MSSU, probably could be weighted a little bit differently, and have a differentiation with some of our other honors courses that we have. We're also bringing in honors courses on the career ed side, and that we want to put, we want to weight those courses. We never have weighted those courses before. For instance, if you take a welding course, or an auto tech course, before you got regular weight, which is a four point oh for an A in those courses. Now, with Crowder coming in and offering dual credit and other requirements kids are going to have to go through, we'd like to weight those courses as well, and give those kids an opportunity to participate, or be a part of the cum laude system if they want to. They would still need to meet all the requirements that we have for, for our college prep curriculum, but we think this is going to be exciting. In fact, the counselors have already been talking about, some of the kids are looking at some of these courses differently. One thing that's, that's been an issue over the years, is if a course can't make, or excuse me, if a cor- if a kid can't make a course work in their schedule, they have a hard time deciding between Advanced Placement and Dual Credit Course. So our goal has been to make sure that we spread as many Advanced Placement courses throughout the different career paths, and the different departments, and do the same thing with Dual Credit, and make those decisions a little bit less based on a half of a point of weight for a kid, rather than maybe what they really need, or what they want, and fit in the schedule. So, that was a recommendation that came, and we talked to several kids about it, we talked to our faculty about it, talked to our steering committee about it, and it was highly endorsed by the school, so, so those are the, those are the changes we propose.
Um, okay, so, I want to ask you about the AP course charging for the exam. What if you have a student who financially, that's a, a, a burden for them, will there be funding set up for them? Because I hate to leave the implication that only those that can afford to obtain the weighted, the weighted grade for the class to be, for it to be like that.
We, any student that qualifies would be eligible for a fee waiver or a fee reduction, we will work with them individually, and we will make that happen.
Okay, thanks, I just.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, I did not, that's in the last sentence, I didn't mention that.
And just on the front end of that, Carrie, you know, one of the concerns I, I have related to that, is if a student is thinking about doing that, and they don't realize that, that, that is there and available for them, and a student qualifies, how, how do we let them know that the kids that have that ability, is, is the guidance department taking that on? Do they know those kids, and who they are, and having those conversations with them in advance, so they're not, purposely not scheduling a class that they'd really like to take, but because they can't afford to, they choose not to?
Well, they, they, they're not required to take the exam, as you all know, so that's one thing. But I think one of the things that we're going to make sure that is put in the syllabi for all the teachers, is that this, this clause is in there for fee reduction, and it's also going to be in our handbook. And, right, Dr. Huff, we're going to make sure that we announce it, you know, broad and wide, to make sure that any student who goes to the, the rest of the year, and they have that situation, that we'll work with them discreetly in the office, and make sure that that's taken care of, because we don't want that to happen, if they elect to take it. We don't have, we, we haven't had that many kids, but we have had kids that have been in those courses that do qualify for those free, fee waivers. And with the Innovation Campus Program is a perfect example, too. We had many kids that were in the Innovation Campus Program this year with dual credit courses, that never would have been able to afford the course. So that, those, those, those courses through Missouri Southern, and, and Crowder, have been outstanding in terms of allowing kids to take courses. So that is very important, it's very important to our community that we address that, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Carrie, do the students, excuse me, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Do students, you said they, it's not required that they take the AP test?
No.
Do they still get the honor points, the bonus points, without taking the test?
Yes, they do, yeah, and, yes, they still get the points.
I was under the understanding that they did not.
No, that was years ago, years ago, yeah, years ago, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. That was, that was why that went, I went, ooh.
Right, and, and you know, the hard part of that is, is some schools, we're, we're probably in the minority of, of, when it comes to deciding grade point averages, and class rank, and cum laude, we go all the way to the, to the very end. A lot of schools stop at the end of the third quarter.
Yes, we do.
You know, and, and we go all the way to the very end, because we believe that, you know, you need to finish the game, you need to finish it hard, you need to, you know, it's easy to be a senior, and, and everybody had senior eyes when they were a senior to some degree. And so, you know, without being able to get those AP scores back, Jim was in charge of AP, so the last several years, we just decided that the kids, they could, we, we pushed them to take the exam if they were ready, but they didn't all have to take the exam, so. So, so the honor points will not affect the, the fact that they didn't take the exam. But the exam, obviously, if they get a three, four, or five, depending upon the university they go to, or college, they could get that for college credit if they pass with one of those scores.
That eighty-nine dollar fee will all be on the student, unless they have a fee waiver, it's not a shared cost?
No, it's, it'll be fifty dollars is the most they'll pay.
Okay.
Unless, they decide not to come and take the exam that day at the last minute after they've ordered it, and we, and we pay the full cost, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Oh, yes, it is.
We'll need a motion for the JHS Franklin Technology Center course revisions, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Randy Still, second by Mike Landis, any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Public comments regarding agenda items? All right, thank you, Ms. Waldo. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I ask a couple of questions about things on here, on the consent agenda vote?
After we, after we approve it.
I think we need a motion first.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Landis, second by Ms. Stickland.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, on the fourteen, just the change management, on the concession, building B, or building two, that's just the cost for parts of the concession, right? That's not the total concession. Like, Walker Masonry is getting one twenty-eight. Here, I've got to pull my microphone. So that is saying that the masonry part is costing us that additional amount, am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, yes, it'd be additional, if it's not a deduction, it would be additional cost.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was understanding that correctly. And then the other question I had was on number eighteen, fund transfer, where it says we can transfer up to seven percent. Is that what we're doing, is transferring seven?
Uh, no, Dr. Fort, we're just asking for the authority to transfer the maximum, and then as we close the books, and review our numbers in July, as we do the final closing, make final adjustments.
We do it every year.
Having the maximum authority, some years we do at that time transfer the maximum, other years we don't, depending on the fund one, the fund four relationship. So, just having the authority gives us the most flexibility to operate.
So we can't go over seven?
Can't go over seven, but you don't have to, you don't have to move one dollar if you, if you choose.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a flexibility issue.
Right, thank you.
Any other discussion on consent agenda? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. On the regular agenda, Mr. Barr, would you tell us about accounts payable, please?
Thank you, President Sharp, the accounts payable includes items for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries, and benefits in both instructional and support areas. Administration recommends the board approve payment of bills in the amount of sixteen million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, six cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the accounts payable, Mr. Still, second by Mr. Landis, any discussion on accounts payable?
Big Matt.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Mr. Barr, would you like to take the lead on the budget for two thousand fourteen, fifteen?
Uh, yes, and initially thank the administration, and Board Finance Committee, and the board at large, for helping with various pieces of the budget along the way. The budget is required to be adopted by June thirty. This next year, we are budgeting completion of our capital projects for the entire, for the rebuild project, including fifty, just shy of fifty-eight million dollars to complete the rebuild for the high school, and final payments on the other two sites. The budget does anticipate on our regular capital outlay, we do, as we spoke about in the work session, we do have, anticipate a reduced amount of regular capital outlay, that is, the outlay that typically goes toward improving the schools' physical assets and structures around the schools, with all the new square footage, we're, we're allowing about a six hundred thousand dollar decrease in our normal capital outlay, to redirect those funds for other purposes. So we'll, we'll be down to buses, and replacing technology for the most part, and a small amount in buildings and grounds to take care of building needs. The, as Dr. Fort mentioned, the board did meet the Finance Committee this morning, and recommended that the large, one of the largest pieces of this budget, besides building, is the annual re, uh, annual raise package. And in there, we're recommending, and a later item, but built in this budget, is a one-step salary movement for all those on the schedules, various salary schedules throughout the district. And the text in the budget does reflect a prior language that differs from that, but I'll correct that, the text in this budget write-up to reflect the board direction for the recommendation. Recommendation for the budget remains the same. So with that, I would ask that the board adopt the budget for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year, and entertain any questions.
No, it's just, so move.
Second. Motion's made by Mr. Landis, second by Ms. Stickland, are there any questions for Mr. Barr, or the Finance Committee?
So number nineteen, salary schedule, is something we'll discuss because it got moved, okay, got it.
No questions on the budget?
Thanks for all your hard work, as usual, every year. You and Susan, your team does an amazing job.
And we appreciate.
A busy month with all the wrapping up a lot of projects, and, yeah.
I mean, we appreciate, as I said earlier, the team approach, the administration dealing with parts of it, and the Board Finance Committee giving directions, so we, we appreciate all that.
Thank you, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Mr. Barr, would you do the salary schedules for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, please?
As mentioned, the salary schedules are a part of tonight's actions, and we are recommending a one-step salary advancement on the various schedules, for all those that have a step to proceed to. Top steps, of course, are not included, because they're at the top step. The, there'll be nothing added, because of the, we're able to put together a small raise package, we'd like to have it bigger, but the, we're restricted by a small amount of state revenue that we are projecting to increase next year, and we're reclassifying some, some of the former expenditure budget, to cover the entire raise package in a combination manner. The largest item in the raise package, the after-salary, the salary total, and the fringe benefits associated with retirement, and Medicare tax, is we need to cover the Affordable Care Act. The last three years has been bringing additional benefits to our staff, which I know staff appreciates that. So the benefits being richer, we've been on a five-year run of no increases in our health insurance premium, and we're recommending with this budget, it's, we need to be paying for anticipated increase in our claims due to Affordable Care Act of roughly four hundred thousand dollars, is what this budget reflects. So, without that, that would be more money going towards salary, but, you know, the reality is, we, we appreciate the health plan, I know we all do, as we need it, and the retirees that are on it, so we, and that is an employee benefit, I need to, we need to keep that in front of employees, that's just for them. So, that's, with that, we are bringing the recommendation that the board approve the attached salary schedules for the FY fifteen school year.
We have a motion for the. Second. Motion made by Mr. Landis, second by Ms. Stickland, any discussion on the salary schedule? On the, I know the part of the discussion was Eagle Advantage money.
Yes.
Can you kind of say how that's going to be restructured, or used in future, either?
Yeah, let me, let me speak to that, you know, Eagle Advantage is something we kept in place. You'll recall, a number of years ago, the, the state of Missouri eliminated the career ladder program. And with that, there was a matching component, and I'm trying to remember what that was, what the, what the percentage map match was back then, was it fifty-fifty, or sixty-forty? Sixty-forty. Uh, this district took that, those funds, we could have recommitted to the budget, which a lot of districts did. Uh, we chose to utilize Eagle Advantage, we refer to it as Eagle Advantage, basically utilize those dollars, capture those dollars, and, and that we, we'd always dedicated for that program, and, and make that available for teacher activities, that it could look like anything, like extras, you know, after-school clubs and activities, additional tutoring, trainings of some kinds, you know, it was, it was pretty broad, broad-based. Uh, as we look at Eagle Advantage going forward, I think one of the things we need to do, and, and we've been having conversations internally, as well as in conversations with our teacher organizations, one of the concerns that was brought up was a fairness aspect, you know, how do we, how do we ensure that a teacher who is maybe doing an after-school club or program, that's only servicing two or three kids, is, is, and they have another, another teacher that might be doing in-depth tutoring, academic work, that may be servicing twenty kids, how do you, how, how, how do you create equity and fairness in that? So that's something we're looking at, as we go into this next year. Eagle Advantage is not going away, in the near term, it's not going away, it's something that we feel like is an important thing, we just want to structure it so that we get the most bang for our buck with, with that effort. And then, beyond that, and our, both, all of our teacher organizations, classified staff organizations know this, we had meet and confer this last week. I, I, just so the board knows, I meet with our organizations once a month, have been for the last several years. And this last, about two or three months ago, I started talking to them about putting together a salary and benefits committee. Uh, we've not convened one of those in a long time. As we look at rebooting the system, and kind of getting back to normal standard operating procedures, I think it's time to take a very strategic look at how we do salary and benefits district-wide, and looking at everything from the superintendent of schools, down to the teachers aides, and looking at how those salaries are structured. Are we competitive, are we not? Where are our weak areas, what do we need to shore up? And put together a, a plan, working with our staff, as well as community members, and parents, and others, to bring to this board. Hopefully, about February of this next year, we're going to kick that off in September, and start doing some deep, deep diving into some very pertinent topics to our, to our faculty, staff, and faculty and staff, hope to bring up, bring not only what we'd like to see happen, establish some goals, but also a plan on how we might be able to achieve those goals long-term. So I'm excited about doing that work, it's long overdue, and it's something we need to get jumping on this fall, and I think we can put together a great team that'll help us make, make that all come together.
But the Eagle Advantage's not going away, it's just in a, they're going to present their, what a teacher presents their plan on what. their, would a teacher present their plan on what they think they should be paid Eagle Advantage money for?
In years past, over the last several years, we've distributed those funds out to the building level, and that was dispersed that way. We want to tighten things up a little bit and make sure that the alignment's taking place, and how those funds are being used, or lining up building improvement plans, as well as district goals. And, you know, I think that's the right thing to do in this era of limited resources, and I think this is a, a good opportunity to just shore up an area that we just need to make sure that those funds are being utilized the most effectively possible. So it doesn't keep people from doing the work, but there is going to be some checks and balances there in relationship to how those funds are utilized.
Who's in charge of that?
Jason has been in years past, and so he's still raising his hand, so he hasn't run off screaming yet, but Jason's been a part of that. We're going to take a team approach to it.
He's not getting paid for that part.
You know, it's kind of new territory in the sense that, you know, Jason can't take that all on by himself, so we'll, we'll be talking to Jason quite regularly about it.
So will the Eagle Advantage money, from the teacher's perspective, then, will be primarily for more of the tutoring, more of the academic programs?
That's what we're working on this, this summer, and we'll be getting teacher input into that. But the main thing, I think, is fairness, paying, paying teachers for the work that they're doing. And, you know, one of the complaints we heard early on was that I believe, and I could be wrong, because it's been a number of years, and we've had a lot, a lot of things happen, but when career ladder was in place, I believe the hourly rate that teachers earned was a little bit, was higher than the hourly rate they earn now under Eagle Advantage. And so even looking at that possibly, maybe there's a different rate of pay for different types of activities, so that, so that creates some fairness, it takes care of some of those fairness issues as well. So we've got to hash through some of those things, and we'll be presenting that this fall when the teachers come, come back. And we'll have a, have a game plan in place that I'm sure will have to be tweaked and won't be perfect, but we're going to give it our best shot, and, and we'll bring that to the board probably in August, and give you guys an overview of what that's going to look like, and roll that out, maybe July, actually. Then, and then look at rolling that out when the teachers come back this fall.
But I mean, there'll still be Eagle Advantage money for clubs and activities. It's just not really based on academic tutoring or anything.
Right. We're, we're still going to take a broad-based approach to it, but we, we just want to make sure we're tight with how we utilize those funds and make sure it's in, that the value is there, that the money that we're spending to, to support those efforts is getting some, some results of some kind that are aligned with the district, district vision and strategic plan.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
And when we form the salary committee, will we put classified staff on that committee?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, because we're, we're going to ask, I mean, the various teacher, you know, various employee groups, we're going to ask, because this is a big project. This is no small thing. And we're going to ask the various employee groups to get involved in that, and so they can do some research into their own areas of expertise. We'll bring resources to the table, provide the back, you know, behind-the-scenes support. And if they say, where do I go to find out where, what a custodian makes in this region on average? You know, we have resources through Jason Jones at WIB, and Chamber of Commerce, obviously, and others that we can reach out to and get that kind of demographic information, so that we can bring that to the table, so they can do some of their own research and make some recommendations based on what's, what's best, best for the district. And we want to be competitive. We want to recruit, you know, we have a recruitment retention plan. We want to, we want to recruit the very best, and part of that's compensation. That's one side of it. The other side of it is how do you onboard them, and then what do you do to keep them here? So that's, that's the effort that's got to go forward, and we're going to have to be creative in our approach, because I guarantee you, we're behind in some areas, and we may, we may find that in some areas we're ahead. And we need to be open to all, all options. And I think from a, you know, from a standpoint, from my standpoint, this board can do, obviously, whatever you guys want to do. But as we look at salaries across the board, I think we have to be very strategic and targeted about how we utilize the, the resources that come our way. So when we get new revenue, it may not mean a blanket across the board, three percent increase for everybody. It may be that, that one area needs a six or seven percent increase for a couple of years in order to get it up to a market standard versus another area that may get frozen, quite frankly, because they're well above the market rate. And when you, when you apply a blanket percentage increase across the board, which is typically how districts do business, you, you put yourself in a position where over time, you create some discrepancies as a direct result of applying percentages across the board. That can happen. And, and markets change, obviously, too. And, you know, with this, this, the economy changes the game as well. And so what was five years ago may not be the same as, as it is today. So we have to just take a broad-based approach to that and, and put the best thinking, put our thinking hats on, and, and go forward, and put together a plan that we feel like we can bring to you guys. Like I said, game plan February. Tina will be helping me take the lead on that, and we'll be having a number of meetings over the course of time. And certainly, if the board wants to put somebody on that committee, or maybe it's a great place for the finance committee to be involved, or if we want to appoint a special board representative, liaison of some kind to sit on that committee, we certainly welcome that as well.
Having come from the certified plan, I knew we had thirty years on our salary schedule. I didn't know the classified plan stops at fifteen years. So I'm sure we have employees that have been here longer than fifteen years.
I'm sure, yeah.
So that's something we need to look at.
There's a lot of things we need to look at.
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've, we've made some adjustments. I think, you know, Paul was mentioning today in the facilities committee, or finance committee, talking about, adjustment was made in like ninety-seven to salary schedules to try to square the circle, as he, as he put it. You know, there's still some squaring of circles that need to be done, and we just need to take a look at all of them and, and see, see what it looks like, and what strategically, you know, where do we want to be? And then we, you know, where are we now? And then figure out how we're going to get there over time.
I think it's important to note that getting to this point tonight, where we're at right now with the motion on the table, took an awful lot of effort on the part of Paul and his team, and Dr. Huff and his team, and that, and then a lot of time was spent answering questions and addressing concerns with Dr. Fort and myself, as well as other board members, to try and get us to a point right now where we can do what we need to do for this year, but also looking for the future, because as I'm looking at the board right now, employer of choice, that's what we need to, this is all part of that strategic plan to get us to where we need to be in, in this area. And I'm very thankful that that's what the administration is looking at doing, taking this salary schedule and changing it to make us the top-notch in the area.
I could tell you that this conversation probably impacts every single one of those five points up there on the board.
Absolutely.
In a big way. And we've got, we've got some, a little bit of catching up to do. I think that people will be surprised at how we've, how we've stayed the course even over the last three years, and in times when people didn't expect a raise, we were able to do some things. It hasn't been easy. This year, it's, those, those decisions are catching up to us a little bit. But, but we do have some options going forward, and we need to take, you know, again, we need to just bring everybody together and problem solve it.
There's a plan in place to get, to get to a new, to the next level. And I think that's, in any, in any organization, that's what's most important. So I appreciate that.
And you said earlier, the discussions of this budget, we've all taken it very seriously.
Yes.
I mean, some of us met, what, seven o'clock this morning, CJ?
Something like that.
So, you know, we've all had questions, and we've all made sure that we've read every bit of information. And I, Paul, and I mean, you guys have done a wonderful job.
Well, Paul came in, I met with Paul yesterday morning, Sunday. We spent about an hour together. Heard a knock, knock, knock on my door at the, at the office, and we spent some time together yesterday talking about options and scenarios, so.
So for a lot of people to see us sitting around the table and make a decision, there's a lot of the back behind-the-scenes that has taken place day after day after day before we got to this point.
There's so much work, but so much effort put forth by, on the part of the administration to make sure they take, good care of the district. And I think that's important, and we appreciate that.
That's for sure.
So motion on table?
Motion on table.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Discussion items?
I have placed two sheets of paper in front of everybody that there was a committee put together probably about a year and a half ago on trying to find different naming rights and opportunities at our new high school. And we have finally put together something we can actually hand out and put out, so people can physically look at it. If we do have anybody that's interested, they can contact Kim Van at six-two-five, fifty-two-hundred, and her extension's twenty-three-eight. And so now that we have this finally done, we can actually go out and start showing people.
Move forward.
Move forward. And Dawn served on that committee with me. We met with the University of Arkansas. They actually came up and spent a day with us, the head guy of their foundation with the university. And we've had a lot of different people on their input in this, and so hopefully we'll have some opportunities in the future for the school district. And Dawn, you may have some.
Just that, the goal is to create more opportunities, funding for different student activities, student needs, district needs, endowments, things like that, that will have long-lasting, positive impact on the community and on the students that we serve in the district.
And the naming rights, these will mostly be on the inside, the, well, the original names that are in the building now, where you're keeping all those.
Those all stay the same.
We've talked about that a number of times. I'm glad you brought that up again. You know, we, we are still honoring Kaminsky Gym, we had Colter Auditorium, we had.
Emmett Green Library.
Library, Reynolds Multimedia Center.
Center.
A number of those, and those are historical items that, those won't be touched. So those names will come back. We also, if you recall, I think about a month or two ago, we approved naming certain parts of facilities in the honor of several former educators. And so we're excited about, about that as well. And, and a lot, a lot, a lot of great things. And it creates a lot of excitement. There's opportunities for, for organizations and alumni associations and things of that nature to have, put their mark on their school, on their new school. And one of the challenges we've had in Joplin over the years is we've got, how many, four or five different high school scenarios over the course of the history of the Joplin schools, and trying to unify all these alumni groups that don't have a, have a, you know, a place to call home, even, even the kids that just graduated from the mall school have a, have a different view on what high school is like. And so trying to create some touchpoints on that campus is going to be a part of that as well. And, and one of the conversations, you know, for anybody in the audience or in the community and the school board, if you've got ideas on how we can honor volunteers, I think we have an obligation to do that. We can talk more about that, but, but the idea of being able to honor volunteers on that site, I think we, we owe that to, to the people in this country that spend a lot of time on our campus, helping us out in our community as well. And I think also related to that, it's kind of a nice segue, actually, we have on August eleventh, starting on the week of August eleventh, there's ten days, August eleventh through the sixteenth, and then, let's see, nineteenth through twenty-second? Is that right? Okay, about ten days roughly, where we'll have opportunities, volunteer opportunities for individuals that are interested. We're going to be running two four-hour shifts every day, looking for a hundred volunteers a day over the course, a hundred, a hundred volunteers per shift. So we're looking for about two thousand volunteers over course for about a ten, ten-day period to help us get moved into the new high school, help teachers unpack, help them get their classrooms set up, and, and get that school ready for the, the kids will be coming just a few days after that. So a lot of work happening. We're coming down to the wire again, and things are, it's looking good. It's exciting, stressful, and, and, but at the same time, a great, great time in the history of the district.
In, in actually expanding on a point that you brought up, Dr. Huff, about the alumni, different groups of alumni, I also wanted to ask, is it possible at this point in time to give information publicly? I've had a couple of different requests from recent graduates of the high school about how to get, how to go about getting in touch with the Alumni Association, where you get information for that, how do you join, that kind of thing. So I'm wondering if we could.
I believe I saw Ms. Van here. Kim, do you mind coming up and sharing?
I can go to the Joplin School's website, and we have a specific page set up where alumni can get information and register, and then they'll get notices from us.
So directly on the website, there's, there's a page dedicated to addressing our registering and, and joining the Alumni Association?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also have a Joplin Schools Facebook, Alumni Facebook page as well. And if you like it and follow it, you just might see your picture, and you're an alumni. You might see your picture pop up.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Your group and your team and everything on this board.
The committee was a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, Kim.
Besides the naming rights, I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that the Rose Garden is, still going to be the Rose Garden. The rock's going to go back, and they'll get the roses back around the rock. We haven't, I mean, it's going back to the high school. Also, the, if you didn't see in the slideshow, the eagle that came off of the side of the gymnasium.
It has landed.
That has been put inside the new building. So we're trying to keep a lot of the touchpoints and things that were memorable to a lot of our Joplin graduates. We're, we're really trying to get those back in the high school, so.
Eagle Alley.
Any word on Brutus?
You know what? Brutus surfaces, or I hear about Brutus every once in a while. The last word I had was he was on the way back from St. Louis to Joplin, and that was probably a year, a year and a year and a half ago. So I don't know, we're going to call him one more time. You know, you know, Brutus is out there somewhere. We'd sure like to have him back and, and getting back in the old high school. There will, we'll make a special place for him if we can get Brutus back. And those, those of you that don't know what we're talking about, it's okay, but there are, there's a large group of people out there that know exactly who we're talking about. So we'd like to see Brutus back.
I have no clue. I just say we're Eagles, and I don't go any further than that. Also, we had a joint meeting, which was the first time, the presenter actually said it was probably the first time in the nation that the groups of a school district all met in one spot. We had the school district, the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the colleges, all in one room to try and.
Counties.
And the county, sorry, my bad, and the counties for commissioners for Jasper and Newton. So all the people that run the Joplin area were all in one room and trying to get some action plans going, so we can all work together, which was very exciting, so we don't duplicate services. So that, that was a, that was a good deal. Appreciate the effort the chamber did to pull us all together in that. And then I think the meeting this week is the tech meeting at the East Middle School.
And Mark Princek. And that's a great opportunity for anybody that's interested in learning more about technology and education, the direction that's headed. A great opportunity for them to hear from a national presenter on that topic on, on Wednesday. Is it Wednesday this week?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday's the community meeting, yep. Any other discussion items?
I just want to give a shout-out to the Joplin soccer, girl soccer team this year was extremely successful, to the point that the district offensive player, the district defensive player, and the district goalie were all from the Joplin Eagles team. And we had seven that ended up being on different teams. So it was just a great, great job.
They played their hearts out in that last game.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that up.
It was on the school website. It was pretty, pretty, somebody sent it to me when I was out of town, so it was pretty awesome.
That is awesome. Congratulations to Coach Miller and his staff, and our, especially our athletes. Awesome. Thank you, family. I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Landis, seconded by Mr. Kimbrough. Thank you for coming to the Joplin School Board meeting. The next regular scheduled meeting will be July twenty-second.